Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe. Mr. President.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please go ahead and take a seat. It's just rather quick. Just have a, I'd like to begin today's meeting with a quick quote from Winston Churchill that goes as follows. Fear is a reaction. Courage is a decision. So let's take that to heart and make some good decisions on behalf of Omaha today. Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the meeting act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here. We look forward to hearing to your testimony on our many items. I'd encourage you to turn your cellphones off, or at least to vibrate. Madam Clerk.
Item six, to consider a class C liquor license for Gray's Craze located at 220 South 31st Avenue, Suite 3109, is communication from the Planning Department regarding permits for the outdoor area.
Public hearing and vote on number six is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is David Outen. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, 402 Craze LLC, doing business as Gray's Craze. My address, by the way, is 8204 South 87th Ave. Gray's Craze will be located in the Midtown Crossing area. The concept is a small bistro and wine bar. I believe the owner is, is in on Zoom. If you have any questions about the concept or what they'll be serving exactly, those questions would probably be best left to him. I'd note that we did get a inter-office memorandum from Mike Wildering requesting that we stipulate to a building permit for the outdoor area. I would also note that this will be adjacent to a restaurant that has some common ownership called Smoke &amp; Oak. The difference in the concepts will be while Smoke &amp; Oak is a bar and restaurant, this will be more of a wine bistro focused on small plates and wine pairings. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any I can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And your client is Dan, right?
Dan Yakish.
Yes.
Yep.
I'm informed Dan was trying to get in by Zoom, but was having technical problems. So appreciate you being here.
Sure.
Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley.
Is Dan not able to get in then? He said having trouble. Okay. Well, David and I talked a couple of times since last Thursday, and I think he spelled out what the plan is here. I have been into the Smoke &amp; Oak pizza taproom. It's great. And if they do as good of a job at the place they want to open here as they do there, then I think it's going to be a great fit. So thanks for coming down. And I'll make a motion, subject to permits and to waive Rule 7, I believe, correct.
Motion second. No further lights. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you, Council.
Thanks.
Items seven through nine can be considered together for Signal Hill Replat 2, located southwest of 120th and L Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item seven, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC overlay district to incorporate this property into that district. Item eight, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item nine, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items seven, eight, and nine are today. Proponents, please.
Joe Detlef's with Thompson, Reese, and Dornar, 10836 Old Mill Road, engineer for the project here representing the applicant and available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion second to approve. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Items 10 and 11 can be considered together for property located at 2001 Vinton Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 10, an ordinance to rezone this property from GC District, NBD District. Item 11, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the NCE overlay district to incorporate this property into that district.
Public hearing and vote on items 10 and 11 are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Question, point of information. When was the first meeting held for this change?
May check with the Planning Department representative, but I'm not sure I see the applicant here and are ready to, able to answer any questions.
Are we not answering questions today, Mr. Fanslaw?
No, that's the first time you called on me, so I'll answer your question for you.
Oh.
The rezoning went in front of Planning Board the first Wednesday in December of last year.
First of December of last year?
The first Wednesday of December of last year.
Meaning 2023?
That would be last year, yes.
Thank you, smart ass.
Let's keep our marks respectful, please.
Point of information, once again, we just moved into a new year. So the question for clarification of 2023 could have very well been easily misunderstood to be 2022. Was it necessary for the Planning Department to make a comment to, to indicate that I was off the mark? That's not necessary, nor is it respectful. Therefore, I was in line with my comment. When he talks to me incorrectly, he is, I'm in line to talk back to him, respond to him the same way he responds to me because he is disrespecting me as a city council person. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you. Actually, so you were asking if the applicant was here. She is not here today. I talked to her last week about this, too. She's a friend of mine's daughter that's trying to do this, and she couldn't be here because she had to, she had to take her daughter to a doctor's appointment. But something that she and I talked about, it's, she's trying to take, it's the former grandma's attic building on Vinton, and she's going to be opening a, kind of a art museum, small art museum studio in the building. So this is part of what she's been taking through the Planning Board. She probably will be coming to us with a couple of other requests on this, but this is kind of the first step in that process. So I'll make a motion to approve.
There's a motion and a second to approve. No further lights. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 12, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to a PUD overlay district located northeast of 192nd and Jones Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. B is a request from the applicant to postpone this item.
There's a request from the applicant to postpone until February 13th. Is there a motion? Motion and second. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public hearings on agenda items 13 through 21 were held on January 30th. I don't see any further lights. Is there a motion? Motion second to approve. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 22 through 47 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name and address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. And I will note that we have the managers on items 22 and 23 available by Zoom if needed for council members. Anyone here on items 22 through 47?
You did number 21 already? I didn't hear number 21.
21 has been dispensed of. This is 22 through 47. Seeing none. Public hearings are closed. Motion and second to approve. Roll call.
Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 48, an ordinance to approve an agreement with Douglas County in the amount of $200,000 and to authorize funding from the fiscal year 2023 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program.
The public hearing on item number 48 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 49, an ordinance to amend Chapter 20, Article 3 of the Omaha Municipal Code entitled "Offenses Against Public Peace" by adding Section 20-52 to provide for a prohibition of disorderly premise and/or nuisance gatherings.
Public hearing on number 49 is today. We'll first have a overview provided by City Attorney Matt Kuzey, then we'll ask for proponents after that.
Matt Kuzey, City of Omaha Law Department. Before the council today, as an ordinance brought forth by Mayor Stotter and Councilman Rowe, it is creating two separate criminal offenses that are essentially the same, it's just a difference of where they occur. Initially, they have the offensive disorderly premises, and that's defined on there as basically a structure. House, club, business of some sort, where, where activities that work to disturb the peace, health, safety, and general welfare of people in the city are listed on there. Beneath that are listed various offenses that can constitute a disorderly premise of note. There are people engaged in disorderly conduct, noise violations, public urination, lewd acts, and consumption of narcotics. Subsequent to that is the nuisance gathering ordinance, and that is for events that are occurring outside of a structure, a vacant lot of some sort, where people who engage in two or more of the illegal activities listed on there could be subject to these offenses. Included within this ordinance also is who could be held criminally responsible and charged with a crime based on this. And the list includes a owner of a property who is allowing it to happen. It could be the person who is in control of the property, perhaps a host of an event or something like that could suffer a citation for violating these offenses. There is what we commonly refer to as a good Samaritan provision in the ordinance as well. If I'm hosting an event and it got out of control, and this is not what I intended, and I called the police and reported, I would not receive a citation for acting in that matter. In addition to the usual penalties that are associated with a municipal offense, that's up to six months in jail, a $500 fine, or both, there is the opportunity for the Law Department and the Planning Department to pursue a revocation of a business's certificate of occupancy. I point that out because it would only apply to businesses and establishments that have a certificate of occupancy, not to residential homes where things could happen. But there is that extra penalty in there that if an individual or a location receives, I believe it's three convictions within a period of 18 months, that could result in a revocation of their certificate of occupancy in there. This ordinance had been worked on for, I think a pre-council was brought up, perhaps about a year, maybe even longer, was, had a discussion with Captain Williamson from the Omaha Police Department, who's here today as well, to address some of the concerns and issues that the police department have been confronting because there is a gap in our municipal code and in state statute as well for offenses that would deal with these types of particular circumstances that occur throughout the city. I would venture to say, and Captain Williamson would certainly be more the expert, that probably all seven of you could point to circumstances in your particular district of, of different types of events that have gotten out of control and that these particular ordinances would fall into in terms of a way for the police to deal with it more appropriately and effectively. So we did work on this. We looked at a number of ordinances. Lincoln has one, Bellevue has one, Coralville, Iowa has one, and I, I think we even looked at one from a municipality in Delaware to try and see what other cities were doing and crafting our own that would suit our needs. So I'll be here to answer any further questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Other, other proponents that want to speak to number 49? Please come down.
My name is Gerald Johnson. My address is on file. I am a proponent on this ordinance for all offenses against the public peace. I want to thank Don Rowe, my city council representative, the mayor, and the city attorney for their work on this proposed city ordinance. I am a lifelong Omaha resident. This proposed ordinance will help law enforcement be proactive by protecting the public peace in our neighborhoods. For example, this applies for all private, for all parking lots, public and private. Currently, groups of teenagers and young adults have taken over parking lots in many area, high school, and businesses. In the last three years, I have witnessed cars doing wheelie, wheelies in the parking lot with tire marks left on the pavement. Two girls are on top of a truck hanging on the roof while the car was driving through the lot. And I hear the sounds of racing motors after 10:00 PM and later in my home. The next morning, the parking lot was littered with beer cans, broken wine bottles, and trash left behind in the parking lot. I've called 911 on numerous occasions, but the police can only cover when they have officers available. Many teenagers do not respect the police as they have police scanners, and they also post their activities on Facebook. This proposed ordinance is about prevention of reckless behavior, respect for the law enforcement, and public peace in our neighborhoods. I want to thank the city council, the city officials, the city workers. I love Omaha. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Other proponents that want to speak today?
Good afternoon, Council of Omaha, Nebraska. I'm making sure my voice is clear. Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson and Question Foundation, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. I was going to speak to supporting this, but not in the same manner as this gentleman. This gentleman here, he believes in confrontation. I believe the mayor is right, but I believe also that DAV on 90th and 134th, those folks who stole that driver's license to take your license, add some money to this and take these young men's picture so they can get a passport, and the police want to confront with them because they can go to study in their summer, like we did in the summer. So some of these programs, I tell you what, Mr. Fredson, while them guys were using in college, they changed Dodge Street because they did the same thing in the, what, 80s? This doesn't nothing new. The young folks need a challenge, and we're willing to give them one in the Peace Corps because going up and down Dodge Street, they blacked it all out. And I don't think the police is going to handle all these confrontations and not at the same time try to catch all the tech cheaters. That's what we're looking for.
Okay. Thanks, Donnie. Any other proponents on number 49?
Good afternoon, Council of Avonia Goodwin, North 24th Street Business Improvement District, 3106 North 24th Street. Mayor is a proponent of the offenses against the peace, peace ordinance. As a business owner and resident of the North 24th Street area, I've witnessed firsthand the need for an ordinance that would address nuisance behavior and lawlessness in my community. This ordinance will help to curb loitering on vacant lots, disorderly conduct after hours, and an overall sense of lawlessness that some feel is their right to impose upon others. I stand here as a voice for Ms. Gency Jones, a 94-year-old woman who owned a home near 25th and Ames for 50 years. Just think, an African-American woman owning a home right after the 1960s. When I last saw Ms. Jones, she was still sharp in her mind and physically able to do light chores around her yard. Many of us dream of aging in place and enjoying the fruits of our labor in our golden years. Ms. Gency was no different. But the problem was that Ms. Gency was confined to her yard, having received threats, shots fired, lewd behavior performed in her driveway, drug paraphernalia found in her yard. Ms. Jones' family would not allow her to walk around the block due to the chaos caused by a nuisance motorcycle club and their patrons located across the street. What is worse, Ms. Jones, a constituent of District 2, was forced to sell her home and even some of her prized possessions. It was sad one day when I drove by and I saw, you know, what looked to be an heirloom on the corner that they was giving, they were giving away, probably because it just wouldn't go to the newer, downsized home where she was living. Yes, Ms. Jones and her family were driven out of her home last year due to a loophole and the lack of legal repercussions for a lawless entity. Many people throw around the word displacement. We talk about it in terms of eminent domain and pricing people out. That may be very true, but we rarely talk about the people like Ms. Jones who are driven out by nuisance, late-night activity, crime, and violence. I'm here representing a young man my husband and I mentor who lives in our neighborhood. This young man has privately asked us many times, say something when violence happens so that people know that it's not okay, and that they can hope for better. When I told this young man, who is now in college, that the ordinance was finally drafted, his reply was good. Maybe now people won't feel that they have to move to West Omaha to live in a safe neighborhood. As many of you know, the North 24th Street Business Improvement District has championed safety and security as a primary initiative. While it was not initially our first order of business, in 2021, when the BID area had 25% of Omaha's homicide rate, the Safety and Security Committee, made up of residents and business and community leaders, worked to establish crime prevention measures that included community meetings, public service announcements, good neighbor letters, and one-on-one conversations with some of the nuisance entities. We even spoke with law enforcement, the City Legal Team, and the City Council Law Committee about policy kind of like this. We are happy to report that the homicide rate, along with the overhaul crime in our area, is down significantly. The only two homicides that occurred, and I always use the word only very lightly when I talk about the death of someone, because they're all alive and they all have loved ones that now miss them dearly. Those two homicides that occurred in the North 24th Street BID area in 2023 all happened after hours. While I'm not certain of every detail, I believe that an ordinance like this may have prevented those incidents and saved those lives. While grassroots advocacy is the springboard for, springboard for change in democracy, eventually the law must set the precedent for how we conduct our society. As a business district, we are acutely aware of the fact that there can be no sustainable advancement of economic development where crime is prevalent. Some may point out overpolicing, but in this case, it's a red herring argument as to why this ordinance should not be put to law. However, as an African-American woman and constituent of Omaha City Council District 2, I see the law through the lens of equity, and that no matter where a person lives in our great city, they should have a sense of safety, peace, and security that is a basic human right. Unlike Ms. Jones, they should feel safe taking a walk in their neighborhood. The law is not, this law is not only preventative in nature, it also brings accountability to patrons, owners, and occupants, closing a loophole in the law. A sacred text admonishes all of us. Defend the cause of the weak and fatherless. Maintain the rights of the poor and the oppressed. Thank you, Councilman Rowe, and others who championed this work, and I thank each of you in advance for voting to approve the offenses against the public peace ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents on number 49? Seeing none, we'll move to opponents.
Can you be on both sides because I have some rebuttals?
Nope. Are there any opponents to number 49 that want to speak?
Good afternoon. My name is Danny Robinson. I live at 5354 North 28th Avenue. I also am a citizen of North Omaha, born and raised all my life. And I'm also a member of the Lost Dales Motorcycle Club, in which the, the young lady who spoke before me was making the complaint that most of the violence and drug addiction and things like that in the neighborhood that were taking place was coming from our club. But I tend to differ with that. I am a law-abiding citizen. I served my country faithfully in the United States Marine Corps. I love to keep peace, and unfortunately, in this city, as it is all over the country, there's not much peace with the relaxation of the gun laws, where children who are mentally ill are allowed, as long as they don't have a felony, they're allowed to have weapons. We are allowing them to, to hang out in areas that are very unsafe. I do agree with that part of what she said. Some of these areas in North Omaha, parking lots where people gather, I don't think is safe. I think we all should be governed to some degree, especially after hours. I'm a grown man. Unless you want to impose a curfew or martial law or something in this country or in Nebraska and Omaha, then how can you tell me what time I should go home and go to bed? I'm a free citizen. I'm allowed to, to live my life as you are, allowed to live yours. And just because I live in North Omaha does not mean you should be able to impose certain sanctions on, on my lifestyle. The lady who spoke before me, I don't know what she does for entertainment, how she chooses to live her life, but that's not my business. As the way I choose to live my life and entertain myself is not her business, and therefore she should not be here trying to bring stipulations and guidelines to govern the way I choose to live my life. So, as well as the gentleman who spoke before as well. I also own property in West Omaha, so I'm a product of both societies. And to say that North Omaha is governed by crime and none of these things take place in West Omaha is, is not correct. I see crime all around West Omaha. I see people walking around with AR-15s in West Omaha. I see people riding in cars on, on, on top of vehicles in parking lots, behind the old Quick Trip on 103rd and 4th Street, hanging out, doing things like that. You know, so it's not a North Omaha issue. It's an issue of us not addressing what I believe is mental illness. A lot of us are mentally ill, and we have weapons, and we're allowed to hang out after hours or during hours because crime takes place all day long in North Omaha, and we all are aware of this. And we all are aware of this. I am a part of a motorcycle club. I enjoy riding Harley-Davidsons. I don't know if you guys all know, but every motorcycle club that exists stemmed from the military. They all come from the military. We had a military motorcycle regiment that would ride bikes. And when these guys came out of the military, they chose to continue doing this and they started what's called motorcycle clubs. And so, we weren't criminals then and we're not criminals now. We don't want to upset Ms. Jones. I knew Ms. Jones personally. And the things that took place with Ms. Jones were not attributed to us. Unfortunately, we don't have the funding in a motorcycle club because we are a nonprofit to put a fence up to keep a perimeter, to keep the ones out who are causing these crimes. We don't have the funding to do that. Will City Council fund us to help us? If you really want to help the problem, you shouldn't police the problem. Advocate some money in North Omaha to help us, to help the community. Don't shut me down saying you don't have a right to exist here. You should not be in this motorcycle club. We're gonna just shut you down. We're just gonna put a law in force and just shut you guys down. There's motorcycle clubs all over this city. We have a pat, we have a pat search procedure before you come into our clubs. We search everybody who comes in. Everybody. You're not allowed to bring liquor in or guns or knives or drugs. So the problem that's taking place is taking place on the perimeter of these places. Unfortunately, people piggyback off of us. It happens. I hung out at the place, I went to a club out on Eagle Run Drive. Some of you gentlemen might, and young ladies might know what I'm talking about. Beautiful establishment. And while I was there, I went to exit the place. I went to a function there. When I went to exit the place, I saw two gentlemen outside selling drugs to each other. It's on Eagle Run Drive. So it's happening everywhere. Now, how do you combat the problem? As also, a poor and oppressed individual. I don't have the solutions to the problem. That's why we have City Council. You guys' job is to counsel the city on how to move forward in removing any threat or uncomfort to any of the citizens of this city. So I'm here looking for counsel from you guys. We do the best we can with what we have available to us. But, you know, some of you guys may be golfers or I don't know what you do for your passion. I like to ride my bike. And there's many of us in this city who like to ride their bikes. Yes, they have some lawlessness in motorcycle riding. But man, you have lawlessness in the City Council. You have lawlessness in the Police Department. Can I appropriate a law to investigate or shut down police departments, our City Council, our judges, our prosecutors for what they do? Absolutely not. So the solution to the problem is for you to hear us and understand that we're trying to find a way to combat this situation. But we cannot do it when you come down our throats and try to shut us down and remove us from society. We're not, if you shut us down in one place, we're gonna move someplace else. It's not gonna stop. But what you can do is you can assist us in trying to resolve these issues because I'm an advocate of that. I want to find a way to improve North Omaha. I love North Omaha. I'm sixty-three years old. I look good like this because I joined the Marine Corps and I live good. I eat good. I live a good life. I don't have much money, but I have a lot of pride. And I have a lot of honor. So I'm asking you guys not to pass this bill or law or whatever it is you have that will impose on us a destructive, uh, reality that will not only not help the situation, but you will hurt us as people in this city trying to do the right thing. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Other opponents that want to speak today? This is number forty-nine. Any other opponents?
Louis T. Minus, Twenty-seven O nine Dewey Avenue. This is for the Peace Officer Ordinance.
This is a nuisance ordinance.
Yeah. I understand what you're doing because I don't like loud noises going through my neighborhood. I live over on Twenty-seven Dewey and there is...
And Louise, just for the record, name and address, right?
Twenty-seven O nine Dewey Avenue. Okay. So I think this is important work. I appreciate the sentiment. Although, I would just say that this is a public hearing. I think that when you're actually voting on it, that you change a little bit. And I'll send you an email about what I think needs to be changed. I don't disagree with, you know, that loud noises in the neighborhood is intolerable. I agree. So, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Any other opponents to number forty-nine?
Good afternoon, all. My name is Ford Beaumont Brown. My address is fifteen-eleven Farnham, Central Park Towers. And I don't believe the solution to the problems in our neighborhoods is placing more law enforcement officers there. I was one of the sharpest critics of defunding the police. I think they've got a valuable job to do and I think they deserve all the respect in the world because it's not only valuable, it's difficult. But I think that there are better places we could place them to bring more peace and stability to our neighborhoods. I'm not afraid to go around walking in my neighborhood at night, which is why I got hit by a car at Thirteenth and Farnham. That wasn't, well, it was a crime, reckless driving, and I think there was alcohol involved in it. But it wasn't criminals or riffraff that did it. By the way, from this point on, you can refer to me as the man in the street. But I think what we need, and I fought for this when I was living in Lancaster County and Lincoln, is we need a place for people who haven't yet found a job. We need to raise minimum wages so that people can find jobs that they can subsist off of. But we need a place for people to go where they can take classes, not necessarily working for a GED or a high school diploma. We need places where they can go and just be edified by the arts. Dancing, painting, sculpting, music, any place to keep them out of trouble. We need to have places where youths can go and not drink, not take drugs. It's not like supplying huge entertainment venues, but just someplace where they can go and not harass their neighbors. And I don't think any of it's active harassment. I think it's passive harassment. I would love to someday, before I die, live in an apartment where I don't have to be woken up at four-thirty by somebody revving their motorcycle until eight o'clock before they take off for work for the day. I just don't think they realize how obnoxious they are. And I don't think they're bad people. I just think they're bored without... Send people to the neighborhood to teach them how to play chess. You know, if you've ever seen The Music Man, pool is not such a bad thing if they have an off-street place to do it, especially in horrible weather. And I don't just mean cold. I mean snow and rain and wind and all that sort of stuff. Nebraska's got some horrid weather. But also, I don't want to see this bill passed until you've attached an amendment that covers noise abatement. The Brits came up with the idea in the sixties. It came over here with the British invasion in the seventies, and then it just kind of faded away. There ought to be a maximum decibel level. You don't need to rev your motorcycles loud enough that they can hear it in Wahoo or on the other side somewhere in the middle of Iowa. It's just, we've lost the lesson of treating your neighbors with respect. Somebody cited scripture in here. I've studied multiple religions. They all teach, treat your people the way you would like to be treated. I'm sorry, stepping over here to avoid that microphone. Pardon?
Tony, please sit down.
Okay.
And I'll ask you to summarize if you will.
Okay. It's just, we need to learn again, apparently, how to treat other people. That's what I would like to see incorporated in this bill. And I would like to see OPD and surrounding police departments able to write a five or a ten-dollar ticket for spitting on the sidewalk or, you know, using obscenities out there. I was waiting for a bus. I'm coming. And somebody is yelling from across the street obscenities at me and the other person waiting for the bus there. No prompting, just out of the brisk, clear, white sky of winter. Just, we need to start doing things as a city. And you are the city fathers right now and mothers, mother, to help us learn again dignity, decorum. That's what I'm gonna ask you for. I don't think we need the rest of this bill. As long as we do have bills that will lead us in that direction. Thank you for your time and my Hector-ing of you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for your testimony. Are there any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we've gotten a little bit off track regarding the original intent of this bill. If Mr. Rowe could answer the question, what promoted or what brought you to making this resolution? What led you to creating this resolution that you created as for as an ordinance today? If you could tell us what prompted you to do that?
Sure, I'd like to respond. I'd be glad to respond to that. I'm listening to constituents. My constituents have been emailing me, calling me, talking about, you know, what's going on in their neighborhoods and how can I help to make their neighborhoods safe with a level of quality of living? That's really what they want. They just want to have a quality life, living in their neighborhoods. They're not wanting to bother people. But now and then, people take liberty and they create situations that disturb their peace. It affects their ability to sleep at night. It affects their ability to walk the dog down the street. And I had an opportunity following about thirty-five or four emails to hold a public hearing, if you will. I went to the Public Library in Millard and I asked if we could use the room for an hour and talk to the constituents and just talk through the ideas of what's going on, what are you concerned about, and what can I do to help? And I was fortunate to have Mr. Cousy there, Mr. Harding there, and Mr. Weason there. And we listened to a full room, probably seventy-five or eighty people that had concerns about living their lives in their neighborhoods. And so from that, I took their ideas. We talked about First Amendment. We talked about free speech. We talked about a lot of different things in that meeting. But what we spent most of our time talking about was secondary effects of bad operators of business or bad operators, you know, of neighbors. And what could we do to help mitigate those problems? And really, this ordinance isn't about attacking any particular business. It's just about holding businesses that are bad actors accountable. And if they are not able to keep control of their clients, then they should be held accountable as well as the clients that are causing the disturbances. So that's how we came to this ordinance. It was a reaction to constituents calling and emailing me on a pretty consistent basis around the end of December.
Did we also, was this also brought about as a result of a business within a plaza area? Was it a gentleman's club that first ignited this?
That was, yes. That was the original complaint from the neighbors. But as I said, we talked through the fact that the First Amendment is important to us. It's important to me, as are the other amendments. The Constitution is important. And so we talked through those issues on what, you know, our intent was not to close a business. We didn't say that's what we wanted to do. Our intent was to hold the business accountable to, there was alcohol being served and just making sure that their clients were coming in and out of there and not causing problems because of alcohol use or because of fistfights between guys that get into an argument or even, you know, whatever worse things that could happen from any business, not necessarily just one on one hundred and eighty of them.
Thank you. And Mr. Cousy, this question is for you. Again, this started as a result of a gentleman's club. So that was the original concern prior to you having this meeting of neighbors consisting of seventy-five or more. After doing those interviews, were there other methods, other solutions to deal with the issue that was being demonstrated as a result of the gentleman's club that we could have explored?
Matt Cousy, City of Omaha Law Department. I think one point of clarification is, I think Councilmember Rowe's point was that the impetus for bringing this forward to the council for consideration and a vote was this constituent meeting. As was indicated this morning in pre-council and indicated in my own remarks, this was a topic that the police and I discussed, I don't know, a year ago, year and a half ago, to start working on, thinking about, and drafting. And there wasn't one specific incident, one specific location, one specific event that sparked that conversation between me and the Police Department. It was simply, you know, this is something that they found helpful. They wanted to see what it would look like. They wanted to see how it would be drafted. They wanted to see how it would work in their law enforcement world. So there wasn't, like, again, one specific event, location, occurrence, what have you, that really ignited the conversation in terms of bringing it forward to the council in the form of this ordinance for you to consider. It's what Councilmember Rowe said about the meeting that he had with his constituents.
And they being the Police Department wanted to see how this would work. Is that correct?
When we, Matt Cousy, Law Department, when we started working on it and talking about it, it was something that the, you know, a gap, I guess, that the police saw in terms of their enforcement capabilities and was something that they sat out the assistance of me and the other attorneys in the Law Department to see what could we do, what's out there. And that's when we kind of began our research and our drafting and discussing it with the Police Department about it.
Okay. And in that discussion with the Police Department, did they share with you how they report where the nuisance is identified as being when they go out and they get a phone call from nine-one-one phone call alerting them that there's nuisance going on? Did the Police Department share with you how they determine where the nuisance is?
I'm not able to answer that question because I'm not, I'm not following it or maybe it's something that I can't answer.
All right. So I've had an opportunity to, I think, I'm sorry, what's your name in the red?
Danny Robinson.
Mr. Robinson, if you could come up to the mic, please. We had a conversation with Chief Smarter, if you can recall, a year ago. And we talked about how the reporting is done by police officers when a call come in. And can you kind of share what you got from that conversation, if you can recall it at all?
Yes, ma'am. The conversation we had with Tom Smarter was, took place at the Lost Diablos Motorcycle Club in which one of my members recited for an incident that took place not on our property but in the vicinity. So we wanted to get clarification. So we wanted to get clarification on what we were responsible for. And Police Chief told us, it has to happen on your property, not in your vicinity. Because they were citing us for things that happened blocks away from us and attributing those incidents to our club. And he said that was not right. They could not do that. So they had up maybe 600 and something calls that had taken place over a few years. And they had put all those calls in the Lost Diablo's Motorcycle Club. But once it was determined that these things didn't take place on, on or near our club, that number went down significantly. And so we personally thought it was an attempt to shut us down. You know, because as the gentleman spoke earlier, motorcycles are allowed. But, you know, we have rules and regulations and bylaws in our club as well. And no one's allowed to race their engine and their motorcycles late at night. That's just not allowed. You would be either, either removed from the club temporarily or permanently for that. We love the community in which we're in because we've been there since 1957. This is not a new club. In fact, we are the oldest black and white motorcycle club on the planet. So we try to keep that intact as best as we can. Also understanding that there's going to be complaints. I don't like loud noises when I'm resting at night either. So I try to respect the community as well as I want to be respected. So yes, Mr. Smarter, he came down and he gave us an understanding of, of, you know, what we were responsible for. And prior to that, myself, I would walk, this gentleman here, we walked several blocks while we're at the club to make sure there's nothing going on and cars parked in the area. And we would see people, we would see people with guns because unfortunately, there are laws that have been passed or relaxed that allows anyone who doesn't have a felony and is of age, even though they're mentally ill, to have a weapon. And so I have to approach these guys, I'm seeing with AR-15s in their hands, AK-47s, walking down the street with these guns, up and down Ames, up and down 24th Street, on 30th Street, you know, 35th Street, they're everywhere. And so I have to address these issues just to keep us safe. Because once a person leaves my club, of course, nothing's going on in there. We pat, we pat search everyone and we also do a magnetized search. So, but when they leave out, we want to make sure they go home safe as well. So we walk the perimeter to make sure nobody's sitting around there. Because these young guys, unfortunately, with, not only with us relaxing the gun laws, we also are relaxing the drug laws. You know, we're allowing them to smoke weed and we know this weed is chemically engineered to drive people crazy. And they're smoking this stuff, it's not natural anymore. It's not the same stuff that we're smoking back in the 60s and 70s. This stuff is called hydro because it's chemically engineered to have an effect on your brain and on your mind and on your well-being. So these are things we have to combat all throughout the city. And until we address mental illness, you're never going to resolve the issues. I grew up in North Omaha all my life. And I didn't grow up with a picket fence around my house. I grew up in what was called Vietnam projects. And it was a war zone every day down there. After drugs came in, after the gangs came in. I lived through those things. And so I know what needs to be done. I think I have a good idea what needs to be done based on me being down there every day. I go to the Sienna House, how many times a week?
Every day.
And I deal with them down there voluntarily because I know they're mentally ill too. I go to the various towers here in Omaha and talk to people to see what's on their mind, what they're going through. Because I really do care.
So thank you for pointing and sharing information regarding how the police sometimes report, as Mr., our Councilmember Rowe indicated, bad actors as being bad actors. And sometimes those reports are inaccurate, depending on how it's being reported through the police. So I'm, with that information in all good conscience, it's very difficult for me to support this bill when I know that there is fallacy in the reporting of who or where the nuisance took place. It's all subjective regarding when the police comes out, whether or not they are able to effectively diagnose or determine where the nuisance took place. Oftentimes, it's reported incorrectly. So this would have, in my opinion, this would have an adverse impact on someone that may not be responsible. I think we need to consider all of these facts before we adopt ordinances that have not fully vetted all these variables into the equation. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Hug?
Mr. Robinson, would you come back up, please, sir?
Yes, sir.
You stole part of my thunder, by the way. I wanted to point out the proud heritage your club has, being the first motorcycle club to allow blacks and whites to join and your first motorcycle club in Nebraska, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
And you've been at this location since 76?
Since 1957.
At the same location?
No, we were across the street at first at the 357 building. And then we bought this place in 84, across the street.
So you've been at this location for quite some time?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you mentioned you have rules and regulations. And if I'm correct, one of your rules to be a member is you have to be able to support yourself, be gainfully employed, pay taxes?
We're a blue collar club, you must have, you must have employment. Like I said, we don't allow any crimes. So they have what's called, I'm sure you guys are aware of what's called the 1%ers. We're not those people. We are a blue collar club. We all have jobs, we have families, we have careers. And we have bylaws that were put in place back in the 50s that we all still follow to this day. And it got them through what, you know, through the 50s and 60s and 70s up to these days. And I think it will take us successfully also. Also, also, keep in mind, you know, we do runs for St. Jude every year, you know? We gave money to Jerry's kids. We support the Policeman's Fund. We support the police, the Fire Department Fund. These are things we've been doing since the 60s.
I am going to support this ordinance, but I'm not supporting it because of anything that may or may not have happened on 24th Street or in your neighborhood or across the street. I'm supporting it because of issues I have in my district. Just this morning, I have two constituents contact me again about a problem property the police have been out to two or three times a day. And, you know, everybody's just kind of at a wit's end on what to do next. This ordinance, are you going to help those families around this property? If there's any problems, and I don't know if there is or not, there's any problems in your neighborhood around your clubhouse, I have all the confidence in the world that working together with the neighbors, that you will be able to get those resolved. And if you need me to help you resolve any of those, I'm happy to do whatever I can do. Also, I'm more than willing to come down to your clubhouse. You want to send me an invitation? And I would be more than happy to come down to visit your clubhouse. And thank you.
Could you add your remarks, Mr. Hug?
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. Actually, we started looking into this ordinance. I had a meeting with Ryan Weason after I actually met with Ms. Goodwin, I think, two, over, it was about two years ago, I think, that we had that meeting. That's when we started exploring that. I met with Mr. Weason. Then shortly thereafter, around the same time, we had some in a neighborhood, Pepperwood, off 156th and Dodge, a problem house where the police were being called out multiple times because we had a house full of people that were literally terrorizing the neighborhood and there really wasn't a whole lot the police could do. I had talked to Scott Lane, who's retired police officer that's now in our code enforcement in the Planning Department. And he brought up this, the ordinance that they had in Lincoln. He said, you know what, you should look into that. So we had multiple people looking at a potential ordinance. I didn't quite like everything that I saw because obviously, I'm very concerned with passing any kind of law that would infringe on anybody's liberties. But I think what we, the draft we have finally got, and I want to thank Mr. Cousy and Mr. Weason for the amount of time they spent getting the right ordinance and not just cutting and pasting from one community. But really, this is really thoughtful. And I believe that it will not affect anybody that's not engaging in this kind of behavior or allowing this kind of behavior to occur. So if, if a bicycle club in North Omaha is not allowing any of that to occur, then, and you're charged with this, you'll have due process. And I firmly believe in our prosecutors that they'll make sure, if they receive a report, if it wasn't you, that they're not going to bring the charges. But I think there are multiple issues in my district as well. I know everybody says, oh, you have to move to North Omaha, or West Omaha, in order to live peacefully. Well, that's not necessarily true. I'm getting multiple calls from people that live off, basically 168th and Maple, that general vicinity. We've got a list of about eight to 10 different people that are congregating in the Target parking lot or other parking lots in the area. They've modified their mufflers so that it sounds like gunshots. And by the way, they've posted on TikTok that they now go drive down to North Omaha and they say, let's go, let's go set the spot shooters, the shot spotters off. I mean, that's their goal. So, and they're coming from, they're coming from West Omaha, driving all the way down to cause problems in, or try to cause problems in North Omaha. So we know that this is existing, that Omaha Police is working also with the sheriff because they go in and out of city limits. So now we kind of have a little task force in regards to that. But again, we don't really have any remedies right now. And this will definitely help. It'll also help us, I think, if we can go to some of those businesses, that they need to post some signs. They need to post, you know, customer parking only. They need to kind of do things that are going to allow the police to come and actually ticket the people that are loitering and causing tons of noise issues for these neighbors out in my district. I also have another one, and it was in El Dorado, a B&amp;B, where somebody bought a house and they rent it out every weekend in the summer. And they have these giant raging parties. Well, it's a different person there every weekend. So they don't really care about the neighbors because heck, they're not going to see them after Sunday, you know? And so we've, I've had calls about that. And the police are going out, well, you know, maybe I can do a disturbing the peace. But I think something like this is going to give us a little more teeth so that it's not just the person causing it. We can go to the property owner that's allowing this to go on weekend after weekend after weekend. And we don't have any way to kind of enforce this or any remedy for those types of situations. So those are just three that I'm listing, just literally off the top of my head, that we have going on in my district as well. I always say, though, I don't, I don't just look at things according to my own district. I look at things about what can make this whole city better. And so from, when I talk to people all over the city, and I speak with constituents because I talk to people that don't necessarily live in District 7, I love to have meetings with everyone. And I have heard these complaints from people in every single district. And so I think it was time that we really got on this. And so, Don, I appreciate you picking this up and saying, hey, it's time. Let's get this on the, on the agenda. But no, this didn't start in December. It really started about two years ago, the discussion of it, and trying to find what the best answer would be. So, and I appreciate all the people that I was able to get in touch with and work with in order to make this, this happen. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Harding?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll say, Mr. Hug took some of mine, who took some of Mr. Robinson's. But I want to point out, as it's been said, that this ordinance does not apply to one entity, one group, one neighborhood. It's citywide. And even as Mr. Robinson pointed out, you know, there are activities happening all across Omaha, not just in one particular neighborhood or with one group. And as Ms. Melton just was talking about, 168th and Maple, I've gotten a couple of calls on that too. I've gotten a lot of the same calls that Mr. Rowe's gotten for 180th and Q. I've got, I've got a problem B&amp;B in Heavenly Acres, near 132nd and Dodge. You know, the list, 204th and Veterans, the parking lot there. The list kind of goes on and on. And we may not be able to regulate good behavior, but there certainly can be consequences that we can put in place to try to discourage some of those actions. And the other thing is, you know, as it relates to any particular club or group or business, you know, if you have rules and regulations in place and your members or your patrons or the users of that aren't abiding by those, then that's all really this is. It's to have those consequences in place if those patrons, those users, those members are contributing to the disruption of, you know, the peaceful enjoyment of one's neighborhood, of one's property. So we're scheduled to vote on this next week. And I think it's, again, we're all elected by district, but we work for the whole of Omaha. And I think this addresses not one particular area, but the whole of Omaha. So I'll be supportive of it.
Thank you. Mr. Rowe?
Thanks, Mr. President. I wanted to just reiterate one more time that this was not, in my, my intent was not to target one particular business. This was to apply all across the city. It could be, you know, Mr. Johnson mentioned the parking lot at the high school. It could be the Target parking lot in Ms. Melton's district. It could be anything across the city. My intent was to hold the bad actors accountable. If you're running a good business and you're, and you're taking care of your neighbors like you want to be taken care of, as Mr. Robinson mentioned, then this really shouldn't concern you at all. If you're a bad actor, and I'm hoping this will allow us to hold them accountable.
Thank you. Mr. Bigley?
Thanks, Mr. President. When Councilman Rowe brought this, I know he had neighborhood meetings he referenced. And I had discussion with him about it when he started the process. And I also talked to City Law and Captain Williamson. We had a nice phone conversation. But I also, I talked to people in my district and my neighborhoods that I represent to get, as we all, we dive into these issues that come up and see what's going on, not only in the city, but in our districts. And also, the BIDs or the Downtown Improvement District. I also got a, had a conversation with Holly Barrett via text because she's out of town. But I wanted to see what, we always try to keep a pulse on what's going on in our districts, to see what is happening in District 3 that I represent. But again, what Councilman Rowe is going through, it goes beyond, what are you, District 6? I'm sorry. It goes beyond District 5. I have a couple of questions for, I think it'll be for Mr. Cousy.
Matt Cousy, Law Department.
So if somebody has cited Mr. Cousy, is there due process if somebody has issued a citation for this ordinance?
Yes, this is a, this is a criminal citation, much like any other criminal offenses in our statutes and our ordinances. If the police believe that sufficient evidence exists to cite someone or arrest somebody for this offense, they will do so. Same process with everything else. The prosecutors will review it to determine whether they believe that they could prove a case beyond a reasonable doubt to a judge. And if they do, the case will be filed. And the same process is afforded to all people will be gone. They'll go through a remand. They'll be given a lawyer if they can't afford one, advised of their rights, have a trial if they so choose, and have an appeal if they're convicted. So the same rights that everyone is afforded in a criminal case would apply the same as if somebody was cited or arrested for these offenses.
Okay, thank you for confirming that. In the 18 months, so in the conversation you and I had, I think, on Friday, that 18-month period, if I'm issued a citation and it's, it's found, I'm found to be guilty, if I don't have another citation or issue for 18 months from the date of that, is it a conviction? Is that what it's called?
Yes.
From that conviction, it's 18 consecutive months and then it's wiped from your record. Is that right?
Well, I wouldn't use the term wiped from your record. It's still on someone's record, but it could not be used as a basis, excuse me, as a basis to have someone's certificate of occupancy revoked.
Okay, sorry, that's what I was getting at. So the three within 18 months, right?
Yes.
And then your certificate of occupancy is in jeopardy at that stage. Is that correct?
Yes, if there was a situation where someone received three convictions within an 18-month period, the Law Department and the Planning Department could pursue a revocation of your certificate of occupancy.
Okay, and that's the second time you Okay, and that's the second time you corrected me on that, so thanks. Because you told me that on Friday when, when we talked about it. So, the 18-month period, was that, and the other cities you looked at, is that a comparable? Where do we get the 18 months from?
It is a comparable. Other cities do have it. It, it varies in time. Some cities have less, some cities have more. And, and I think in our discussion, the discussions that I had with the police department, particularly Captain Williamson, who was working on this, you know, I think we determined that 18 months was a reasonable amount of time. But, I mean, every state is different. Here in Nebraska, if you get a DUI, if you do a third offense DUI aggravated, you could lose your license for up to 15 years. Other states have less, other states have more, so it's kind of a mixed bag.
Okay. And I know in pre-council this morning, a couple of my colleagues had mentioned Airbnb's, and it was mentioned in here today. I have several Airbnbs in District Three. I, I don't know how many of these things around the city, but can you tell me specifically, if you can, how this would apply to an Airbnb? Or even, I represent neighborhoods where a lot of Creighton University students, UNO, College of St. Mary's. Does this apply at all in respect to how the Omaha Police Department deals with those issues?
I believe so, yes. Both the situations that you've mentioned, the, the renters of houses by college or graduate students that you referenced in the Airbnb's, yes. Similar to what Councilmember Melton said, if there are huge house parties going on at Airbnb's or rental properties, and, you know, the police are able to discern who the hosts or hosts or the people allowing this to happen, they can pursue a criminal citation against them if the evidence warrants it. You know, when it comes to the person who is the renter, either of the property or an Airbnb, unless there is evidence that you could prove that the person, you know, was allowing this to happen, that person may not necessarily be cited because they may not know what's happening with their rental property or their Airbnb property. But if there's evidence to the contrary, that's something that could be pursued. I guess the key point is, given that this is a criminal case, the focus is really on the evidence. It's not just, oh, something happened there, this person's going to get arrested. Just like any criminal case, whether it's a speeding ticket or a murder case, there has to be evidence in order to justify a criminal charge.
Okay. Thanks for that explanation. And the, the issues that I deal with specifically, and I, I had a meeting with some Gifford Park neighbors last Thursday, and I know when I got on the city council in the summer of 2021, growing up in that neighborhood, it's, there was a ton of students that lived there more than ever now. And it was an issue back in the seventies and eighties when I grew up. But as I got on the council, I really got laser focused on understanding the issues of the neighborhood associations, anywhere in the city. They want to have good relationships with, if it's an Airbnb, if it's college students living, or nurses or whatever who is living, they're entitled to have a barbecue or a party or whatever, but you also have a responsibility to be a good neighbor. And that's a balance, at least, that I've always tried to have with the neighborhood associations. They don't, they love and they welcome the students or anybody that lives in, in the neighborhoods or the neighborhood associations, but there also has to be a balance. And, and when I mentioned that I talked to Councilman Rowe, the Omaha Police Department, city law, constituents, the Downtown Improvement District, and neighborhoods and people that, you know, we, we have people that we reach out to, to try to get a sense of where things are at. So that's what I focus on, reading this ordinance that I've had to read multiple times and break it down and understand it, and then ask my questions on making sure I understand all the moving parts of it. So I know one of the last things is, one of the longtime neighbors in Gifford Park that I really value and trust, that was active when I was growing up there, he, his position on it was that it, it gives tools in order to deal with problems that they've dealt with for a number of years. And as I continue to learn this and, and we go to our vote next week, it's good to get the feedback from constituents and people in the public throughout the city on what their positions and what their angles on how this will apply to whatever respective group or neighborhood that, that we represent. So, thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, I believe your light was on.
Yeah, it was on.
Yes, go ahead.
It just magically goes away technical problems every week. Yes, Mr. Robinson, could you please come back up? You had a question there.
I have more of a comment than a question. And that is, I do understand that this is not targeting any individual business in North Omaha or West Omaha. I know it's a universal law. And I, I'm not the only club present. There are other clubs that, that came down today as well. Because as Ms. Milton mentioned, I want to say this, this is a criminal offense. So if we're cited for something that takes place on or around our business, then we're going to be criminally charged. And we take that very seriously because this is our livelihood. It's like our, our livelihood is being criminalized to us. And, you know, Ms. Milton mentioned that, and we've been on this for years, people come from other communities and they set it off. They come down, they shoot guns. They, they'll get in the middle of our street and do donuts in the middle of Ames in their cars, high-performance vehicles that nobody in my neighborhood can afford to have. And this happens all the time. And so when these things take place, you're going to get calls. And you're going to send the police officers down, and they're going to come down, and they're going to say, this is attributed to the Los Diablos Motorcycle Club, or to another motorcycle club, or to this place over here, and you're going to cite us. Now, I have to get an attorney because I'm criminally charged. And this is going to happen over and over again. But the fact of the matter is, we're not committing any crimes, but we're being charged as such for trying to have a good time and keep the peace. So, you know, it, it's like opening a can of worms that is going to produce rattlesnakes in our, in, in, on our behalf, because we, we feel we're getting bitten for just trying to enjoy our lifestyles. we understand that, I personally understand that you all want to keep the peace in the community and be, and have us be respectful in our communities, and we do as such. But we just can't, we cannot govern what takes place outside of our club or off of our property. And that's where every issue has taken place with us. It's, we've never had an incident on our property, ever. Not one incident on our property. It's always the perimeter. That's why I asked you guys initially, if you want to help me, give us some funding to put up a fence, because we can't afford it, we're nonprofit. We take up dues every month, and that's how we make our money. And most of the money we take up, if we have any, any surplus, we give it away to charities. We, we fund a local dance team, a local, this gentleman's basketball team right here, he has a children's basketball team. We fund that. We send them to the boys' club to practice, and we pay their, their tuition in the boys' club. So we're trying to do a good thing, and it's like we're being beat up for, for that. Because yes, people in the community are going to be, you know, irritated if motorcycles come through there, racing and roaring, or people shooting or looting, or whatever might be taking place. But do you, do you criminalize us for that? Is that fair? That you criminalize my lifestyle for that? Like I said, I go out on Eagle Run, I've, I've been out there. My former wife used to work there. And I, there are things going on out there, but because I believe, personally believe that, you know, the upper echelon is in that area. So they don't get the type of publicity that, that we get down here, unfortunately. But, you know, I, I'm going to say to you all, I wish you would take it into consideration before you make a vote to put me in a situation or put us in a situation to where we're going to be criminally charged for something that we're not doing. That's just not fair. Thank you.
Um, in conclusion, I would just like to note that some communities have a lot of challenges, and many of those challenges stems from financial challenges. The community in which I serve is a byproduct of not having opportunities, not having the ability to have good, reliable transportation to get to opportunities, opportunities where the city has contracts that they award routinely. Most of the time, when I look at the stats that was provided by the SCB Small Emerging Business Summary for the second half of this year, we're looking at a, for the second half of the year, I'm looking at it now, it tells us that for the year of, for the year 2023, 7.10% of total contract issued by the city were for, from utilizing this SCB program. We also have, 24th Street is also known as a historical entertainment district. So again, how do we quantify north noise level on a entertainment district area? How do we quantify that? I don't see anything in this ordinance that talks about that. There are so many holes in this proposed ordinance, and it's just, it just begs for the question that we reevaluate this, that I understand that citywide, that there is problems with, with, that we're having problems overall. But we have a community where we have all of these things that are lacking in terms of financial stability, and it just seems like that, that particular community is always being the brunt of bearing the most outrageous outcomes of everything that we institute. Again, I would ask that we consider this and, and take more deeper dive into, to the remedy of this problem. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Matt, add one more thing?
Yes.
In the past, we were targeted, the Los Diablos Motorcycle Club was targeted, and we were here to defend that. So we know this ordinance is passed based on what I've heard today from an individual who spoke prior to us speaking, who was a proponent of this. We believe that we're going to be targeted even more. And that's just not right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, look, your end is closed, but we had one gentleman come in late, and it seems like you want to have a chance to give a few words. I'll recognize you if you'd like to do that. Your name and address first, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Avery Gaskin Smith. I'm a member as well of Los Diablos Motorcycle Club. I would just like to say that I feel as, as far as with this ordinance, it is very, it's key to the community down in North Omaha. Like, like he spoke on, I was a basketball coach. We lost a lack of funding, we went through a lot of troubles after COVID, but we were, kept afloat by Los Diablos, and that's how I was introduced and became a member, just by meeting Mr. Robinson. And that's how I became introduced to the motorcycle club community. But we had various, various kids that, like I said, even after COVID, they were impacted, their households were impacted, they couldn't even afford to play basketball, to play sports. But when they would come down to our clubhouse for different events, whether it be Easter, when we gave away candy and things, Halloween, when we had trigger trunks and things like that, these were all safe environments for these kids. And I can speak on that on other motorcycle clubs as well, and other different clubhouses like that, that we've been to. These are incidents that are outside, not in the clubhouse, they're outside, they're away from here, that we can't, we can't control. So I just wanted to reiterate kind of what he said and just say that on my behalf, that I'm very appreciative to have been a part of, or to be a part of, and to have gained witness to these type of things that we, we take part of in the community. The Hunter House that we built the last two years, we constructed, taught some of the kids how to build things, things like that, and those are all funded by these clubs, you know? So we, we see the, the riffraff that goes on, those aren't even people that come into the club. They're, they don't even, they're not even on a lot, they're a block away, two blocks away, things like that. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think I missed your address, too. Did you provide that?
My address?
Yeah.
4810 Brown Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to clear up something that was said about the perceived holes in this and a comment about the noise or sound. It's very clearly stated in 2B that the noise or other sound in violation of Section 17.3 or Section 55-804 address things like noise and sound violations. So it is a very well-thought-out piece of legislation. And are there things that might have to be tweaked over the course of time? Probably. But I think there's a lot of thought that's been put into this, and it's something that I think we should all support.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And I would like to point out also that these things that are happening in marginalized communities, where we're imposing things that does impact livelihood, impact financial responsibilities, such as the ability to go to court and prove that this noise level that we received a ticket on could be kind of something that someone doesn't have the ability to do. Marginalized communities do not have the ability to get a lawyer and challenge all of these things that may be unjust. Many times, individuals, rather than going through all of that, they oftentimes take pleas, they bargain, they do all kinds of things, not necessarily saying that they are guilty, but because they don't have the wherewithal to obtain legal representation to present their argument. I'm sorry, I understand safety, I'm, I'm, I'm all for safety. But with the police admitting that there is a fallacy regarding how they report ownership of bad actors, I wouldn't be able to support that, this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rowe.
I'd like to call up Ms. Goodwin. Would you like to make further comments or response?
Yes, Levanya Goodwin, North 24th Street, Business Improvement District, 3106 North 24th Street. I just wanted to say, as a proponent of this ordinance, many of you know that we stand up against all types of nuisance issues across our district. It is one of the legislative tiers in which a BID has some sort of jurisdiction. I also wanted to point out that several times we reached out to the Motorcycle Club that I did not name in my comments. To be a proponent and an advocate is often challenging. This year, we were recognized by the International Ministerial Denomination for advocacy, not because we wanted to be big and bad, but because we realized that oftentimes you're the voice for the marginalized. So I would like the council to recognize that we're a proponent, not against, as much as it's that we're a proponent, not against, as much as it's for the peace and safety of our community. Mr. Robinson, we want to be good neighbors.
Make sure you address the council.
Yeah, well, he, Pete?
You didn't turn around, face us, please.
Yep, yep. I was referenced several times. And I want to make that acknowledged. We want to be good neighbors. And perhaps this is a place to come again, once again, to find a common ground. I don't want to leave out of here as if an ordinance to protect the community, the Omaha community now becomes some type of incident or issue against me personally. And I want to make my concern for that very clear to this council, to our mayor, and anyone else. Because it takes bravery to talk about eight homicides in 2021. All those didn't happen in one place within our district, but they were one too many. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Oh, thank you. And actually, I had my light on because I was going to call Ms. Goodwin back up. But I did just also want to clarify, this is a criminal ordinance. And as Mr. Cousy stated, if anybody is charged with this and does not have the means, a lawyer will be appointed, either the public defender or a private attorney, if there's any conflict with the public defender's office. And I also just want to give a plug to our public defender's office. And Tom Riley, some of the best attorneys that we have in our state are right here doing good work in Douglas County. So people are protected and will get their due process and will have legal representation if they can't afford it pursuant to this ordinance. Thank you. I have nothing further.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it should be pointed out that, yes, we do have a public defender. However, their caseloads are so heavy that many times, individuals are not able to meet with their public attorneys until one hour before they're in front of a judge. So despite all of these opportunities that we would like to project that the public defenders provide, that's not necessarily, that's not a great representation of what the realities are for these individuals that cannot afford attorneys themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further lights. That concludes the public hearing on this item. Thanks for your testimony today. Madam Clerk, next item.
Non-action items, items 50 through 82, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
We're not going to get a public hearing?
Bagley.
Bagley? Harding, Hug, Johnson, Melton, Rowe. Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 3:32.